City Council meeting scheduled for 7:00 PM, March 15th. Allow come to order. Roll call, Councillor Hoag.
Here.
Koyvenen.
Here.
Lilis.
Here.
Hadrava.
Here.
And I'm here.
Approval of the minutes. City Council Workshop, February 23rd. Minutes of the City Council Workshop, March 1st. And City Council meeting on March 1st. If no one has any changes or corrections, can I have a motion that we approve these minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Hadrava, do you have a support?
Support.
Support by Lilis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Approval of tonight's agenda. Anybody have any additions? Jerry, were you gonna add something? An addendum on?
No, no, that's just, uh, we don't need an addendum on that. That's for, uh...
Oh, okay.
We're just looking at updating local benchmarks out of business. Just an add-on to this.
Oh, okay. If no one has any changes or deletions, I call for a motion that we approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Motion made by Koyvenen, do you have a support?
Support.
Support by Hoag, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We don't have any appointments or presentations that I'm aware of. And if anyone from the audience would like to address the council at this time, we allow five minutes, but we'll allow additional time after the meeting. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Approval of payroll, February 16th through the 29th. Approval of claims, February 2016. And joint powers mutual aid agreement, Boundary Waters Drug and Violent Crime Task Force. Tim, that's something we do every year, don't we? Or is it every so many years?
Uh, Mayor, no, this, this has been in place for several years. They are updating this, this year because there's an addition of some other departments, Eli, P. Stray, PD Chisholm, Ryan, and Babbitt that are now going to also be a holding member of the task force. There's a little need to change. Uh, mainly it is the same mutual agreement that has been placed. Council, Lilis, I think you have a mention of 09, 08 or 09, I believe, the date that the last joint powers was signed, so it's similar to that one.
Oh, okay, so it's good. Some of this stuff we do every year, I wasn't sure. Anyone else have any questions on a consent agenda? Any items? If not, can I have a motion that we approve that?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Hoag, do you have a support?
Support.
Do you, you support that, Brian?
Yes, sir.
Support by Lilis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. We have no public hearing scheduled, no unfinished, finished business. And we'll jump into new business. Item J1, facility use agreement between the city of Evlith and Roller Underground to rent the hip and droop. Pretty much is, I think, the same thing we had last year. I think we found some space for them down there, too? To store their equipment, Jerry?
Yeah, there's a, there's a place underneath the tunnels that they're using. It is in a whole lot of stuff. There won't be any problems.
Well, it's, it's nice to see the place getting some use other than in the winter. Good entertainment and they really take a big interest in this. It's something, hope it takes off. It has really got a lot of attention. I hope it keeps going. If no one has any questions, call for a motion that we approve this facility use agreement.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Hadrava, do you have a support?
I'll support.
Support by Hoag, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item number two, golf course, Evlith Golf Course Clubhouse Agreement with John Rennie for years 2017 through 2019.
We, uh, we had Bonnie clear this up a little bit because it hasn't been taken care of for, for a few years. And, uh, I think Bonnie went through it all and, and John said it was all right with him. We, he's gonna pay a little more on, I think, the kitchen. And everything's cleaned up for us, so it looks like a good contract. And I think the last time it was, was brought up was when, uh, Mr., when Bill McKinsey was here, so, you know, nothing's ever really been done with his contracts. We just took some stuff out and put some stuff in that would take care of the city. And John agreed with it, so I will make a motion that we do this.
Motion by Koyvenen to accept the agreement, do you have support?
I'll support it.
Support by Hadrava. You know, it's been that long since you updated the agreement, Dave, since Bill McKinsey was there.
Yeah, it's, it's been a while. You know, it, it wasn't, it wasn't that far out of things, but there was just some stuff that needed to be brought up. I mean, Bonnie went through it, so...
Well, you know, you gotta refresh all that stuff every once in a while. Things change and...
Well, as long as John's happy with it, I'm happy because he does a wonderful job out there and our golf course hasn't been this nice in a long time. It's getting better all the time. We threw a little money, had some stuff out there to make it nicer for everybody and...
Well, you get a lot of compliments.
Getting a lot to use.
People stay at the veterans park. And they compliment both the park and the golf course. So it evidently looks great.
Commission's been working hard with it. You know, they're, they're doing what they got and they also need new commission members if anybody out there is interested.
That's the toughest one.
Yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item number three, consider awarding bids for 2016 street improvement projects. And these would be the overlays. Masabi Batuminas is the successful bidder, $68,575. Jerry, which streets were these for the public's information?
Um, this was Adams by Northside Park, Shackleton just on the corner there, coming around Lincoln, and then we're doing half of Lincoln up to where the old, there's some new pavement going up Lincoln. And, uh, we're gonna go from there and go up in our own corner. And Monroe Street and the 400 block.
And you think once we have the contractor here, if we maybe look at a few others, too, and do some, get some quotes on that?
That'd definitely be nice if we could.
Since we got them in town. Because this, this came out actually a lot better than I thought.
Prices came in real good. You can definitely find some more areas to do them. For giving the okay.
Yeah, this, this came a little lower than I thought it would, so... Yeah, I don't know, maybe make up a list by priority, you know? See what else, and see if we can work out with them. Because once they're in town, these things aren't bad. It's not like a reconstruction to do an overlay. Item number four, lease agreement between Two Rivers Auction at 206 McKinley Ave, Evlith. Oh. Did I get a motion and a support? Somebody wanna accept the bid? Motion made by Hoag, do you have a support?
I'll support.
Support by Koyvenen, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Two Rivers Auction lease, I don't know much about these out there.
I can fill you in a little bit on it. Uh, he had a utility payment, if I'm not mistaken, he stopped in today and paid it for the 30812. And since Jackie's not here, the, the $30, it's something about, we had to be out there by the first, we didn't get out till the fourth. So I, I, we really don't know what it is until Jackie comes back. But he still wants to lease the basement. And he's still working on the other part, but he hasn't, he has to do some legal stuff before he can come by with all the paperwork on the financials. So he's waiting for that to go.
Well, he did pay the utility?
He paid the 30812.
Okay. Should we, you wanna prove it as it is, then?
Yeah. I, he's willing to go because it only goes six months at a time. And then we renew it each time till we find out what's going on on the other end, so... With that, I'll make the motion to...
Okay, motion made by Koyvenen to approve the lease, do you have a support?
I'll support.
Support by Hoag, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Next item, resolution accepting donation for K-9 unit amount of $3,000 from the Minnesota Power Foundation. Man, that dog is gonna have quite a retirement plan. Look at that. It just, we must, we must be close to, what, 30 grand, Tim, on that?
I believe we're a little over $24,000.
Oh, God.
There's yet to come.
Is he ready to go to work pretty soon here?
He'll start his main, uh, trust of his training here in two weeks.
Oh, good.
Wow.
Because everybody's anxious to see him, you know? They're really curious. Can I call for a motion that we accept the resolution with the donation from Minnesota Power Foundation for $3,000?
Oh, moved.
Motion made by Lilis, do you have a support?
I'll support.
Support by Hoag, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item number six, consider approving the construction plans and authorizing benchmark to call for bids for the 2016 sanitary sewer improvement projects.
Maybe Jerry could give a little rundown on this for the public.
Exactly where they are, kind of?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, the first sewer project that we'll be doing, it's a sanitary sewer and it's on Pier Street between McKinley and Bayle Avenue. And we'll be changing the piping and the manhole structures. And then possibly be doing a little more sanitary sewer down by Bayle, uh, Bayle Pond. So we'll see what, uh, what happens.
See what the numbers come in like. Any other questions of Jerry? If not, can I call for a motion that we approve benchmark to do this service for us?
So moved.
Support. Motion made by Koyvenen, support by Hadrava, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item number seven, most popular program of the year, consider approving 2016 refuge collection and yard waste pickup schedule.
You know, I, I just got a question on this. I think it's one of the best things we have in town. And when we, when we have the, the thing down at the garage, now is that under this too for the collection?
Yeah, that would be.
Uh, my, my question is, we have a guy there all day long when we're dropping stuff off. Now, we have a guy that we're paying $25 an hour. Can't we put somebody else there and have them go out someplace and, and work? I mean, you got a guy eight hours a day that's sitting, just sitting there.
Well, I know last year you had someone that hurt their ankle.
Yeah, we had one guy there last year for a little while.
Somebody who...
That hurt himself on the job. One of our workers. Some member's seen him down there.
Yeah, and then mostly, most of the time when we do have somebody down there, they do help out with people.
Okay, well, then that's fine, you know? I just, I, I've had some people, you know, talking to me and chewing my ears off, and I've had some people talk about scavenging down there. And, and, and I think this year I wanna make sure that our guys aren't going through the things, you know? They're down there to work, no piles on the side anymore. You know, that's it, because...
No, we, we eliminated that last year with, uh, one of our personnel down there. He was, uh, checking IDs that people were coming in and we did, uh, send people back, a few people back.
Okay, then I have, I have no problem with that. I just wanted to know.
It's worked out really well.
Okay.
There was one guy that hauled a load over from Nashwauk.
Oh, he was in Nashwauk. They're, they're, they come from all of them. And since we check IDs, which we're gonna do again this year, we eliminate a lot of them.
Well, that goes to show you how valuable a service is when you're driving 20, 30 miles to dump a load off.
And I, I think the guy that was there last, it was fantastic.
Okay, good.
He worked hard. People, people get pretty mad at him sometimes.
You know, he actually, no, he was, he did help out, you know? Somebody, an elderly person or something, gotta throw some stuff out of their truck, he was there helping.
And he has a bobcat and he can, you know...
That's more or less, I just wanted to bring it up because I had some complaints and, and now, you know, everybody can see why he is there.
I, I definitely believe he should, or some of he should.
Okay. Well, you brought up a good point, helping people, you know?
Yes.
Load some of that stuff, because I know he was dumping stuff in a dumpster.
Oh, yeah, he helped me a couple times, yep.
And I think the schedule, did I see the schedule in last month's water bill already?
No, they haven't gone out yet because we didn't get the okay.
Oh.
They'll go out in, uh, they'll go out in the morning, let's say, at home.
And also, um, I don't think a lot of people know about, I don't know, are we still doing this? Someone has a big project, they can rent or have a truck dropped off at their residence?
Yeah.
And then, and they pay for the dumping fee, whatever.
No, they pay for the truck, they don't pay for the dumping fee at, at that time. And when it's spring or fall cleanup, they don't have to pay for the dumping.
Okay.
They have, they pay like 25 bucks to have the truck dropped off, they load her up, they talk to Jerry, they come get it the next day and their stuff's out of there.
And that is, I don't think a lot of people know about that, because that is...
That'll be on, uh, on fire that's set off, too. And it shows what we charge, you know? If they want us to come up there and grab something, you know, if we have time, we can do it, you know, fast enough.
That is, uh...
And that's all.
That's an awesome program. I don't think, I don't know of any other town that does that.
I save all winter just for it.
Mm-hmm. And that is all dependent upon having a truck available so people know.
Right.
We're not gonna short ourselves.
And in the summer, you know, usually we...
There's really no reason to have a lot of blight in your yard if, uh, you know, we're offering all this help, so...
That's definitely the time to clean up the winter.
I guess that's where I was going with it.
We do it twice a year.
Yep. That's where I was going with it, too, I mean...
Well, you know what a hassle is, gonna be going to the dump with this Highway 53 road construction and land clearing going on. You know, it's, makes a lot more traffic than normally is there. And that is, starts April 18th through May 13th. Anybody else have any questions or anything?
No.
If not, can I call for a motion that we approve this schedule?
Um, so moved.
Motion made by Hoag, do you have a support?
I'll support that.
Support by Hadrava, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item number eight, consider authorizing Director Public Works to call for quotations for 2016 curb and sidewalk replacement. I think we, we committed to $30,000 again this year and we got another $10,000 from St. Louis County for the county state aid streets around here. So that's 40 grand for sidewalks in Evlith, that's quite a bit of money.
And that'll be a nice chunk.
Help us keep ahead of the game there. That was a nice program the county has for that.
Yeah, that was, it was nice to hear from there at Austin.
Well, you mentioned it to me, I was really surprised. I said, boy, that, because I know we're pushed to the limit, we used to go, is it 15 or 20? Then we jumped to 30?
Last year you went to 30. And that, that being...
It seems like we, in the past few years here, we've been doing exceptionally a lot of...
We've been getting 20 grand.
Big projects in the city, you know? Sewer, water lines, a lot of sidewalks, a lot of overlays. Uh, it seems like we're catching up with some of the stuff that never got done in the past here for a while.
We had like a five-year plan, I think, that we all took, you know? And, and it's actually, we're, we're working on it. I mean, if, if we stick to it, you know, it's, we've done a lot.
Been working well.
You never know, like, the money situation out the IRRB, now the mining slowdown this year, are you gonna have a lean year thrown in there, or two? That's why if you get these things while the money's there, you know, you won't get too far behind you. That's, that's what I worry about. Anybody else have any questions of, uh, Jerry? If not, can I call for a motion that we approve, give them the approval to call for quotations?
So moved.
Motion made by Koyvenen, do you have a support?
Support.
Support by Lilis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item number nine, consider grant contract between the State of Minnesota Department of Labor and Industry Occupational Safety and Health Consultation Unit and the City of Evlith. That is a grant for... Was it $2,479?
Yes, that's their match.
Okay.
Our total project is right around $4,900, may match that.
Can I call for a motion that we enter into this agreement with the state?
Absolutely, I'll make that motion. It's for a harness, a light, and a safety tripod for our guys to go in manholes and do their nasty job when they have to go down there to do it and, uh...
It's a no-brainer.
It's a good thing, so... Yes, I will make that motion.
Do you have a support?
I'll support that.
Motion made by Hadrava, support by Koyvenen, it's, you know, you gotta be able to operate in all times of the day, in all type of weather, but, you know, safety, that's the main thing. Something happens, it's pretty, pretty tough to replace these experienced employees. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item 10, consider offering the Public Works Director to purchase tripod and remote lighting system. That's in direct reflection to the grant, right? Anybody have any questions, Jerry, on that? If not, can we call for a motion that we authorize Jerry to purchase this item?
I again will make that motion.
Do you have a support?
I'll again support it.
Support by, motion made by Hadrava, support by Koyvenen, any further discussion? How long before we get it, Jerry? Pretty quick?
Yeah, they said a couple weeks, though.
Oh, that's a good turnaround.
Yeah, it shouldn't be long.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. That sums up new business for tonight. Anybody have any committee reports or presentations, any?
I had the Gulf Commission, which I threw a plug in before, but we could use another member or two, if anybody's out there that's willing to get on a commission. Um, just let Stephanie at City Hall know, we could really use one more member.
That's, that's the toughest thing is, you know, the fill of commissions.
Yeah.
You almost have to go and, you know, ask somebody, because no one thinks of it and...
You have to bribe them.
I, uh, I had a meeting, I had a conversation with Tony tomorrow, yesterday, and, uh, they're kind of anxious to get together on the fire department discussion. I told him, when Jackie comes back for vacation, we'll work on that, but we're looking at going a step further. Maybe we can get members from the council and the township, if there's any projects, joint projects that we could apply for between both of us? Because we're, we're so close to each other and everything kind of melds together.
Yep.
And keep everybody abreast of, you know, what's going on. They might find something, you need some help getting it, and, you know, vice versa.
I think that's a good idea.
And I told him I would, I would bring that up. I said, that's really good for communications.
Well, it seems like the whole world is going consolidation, so if we can consolidate to a certain point and work with them and on some big projects out there, we've got lots of water line, lots of sewer stuff out there, a lot of roads, a lot of property we own out there, yes.
I think that it's a big thing, we work together, and this is a good start to start.
It's, it's a, a big benefit, you know, to the residents of both communities.
Yep.
And, you know, we've kind of forgotten Leonidas, too, you know, there.
I was gonna bring that up, too, Leonidas, if we started to do a little work with them.
I guess if we sit down, maybe, uh, should invite them and let Gilbert know, too, because Gilbert wants to be involved with the fire department and things. Because who, who knows who needs help? Because, you know, you look at something, you're kind of all alone, and you get the others to go in, because it indirectly affects all of us in this tight circle here. So I told Tony I would, I would bring that up and see if Jackie gets back next week, then we'll get to work on starting a meeting, because he says some of the firefighters are getting anxious out there to get going on this, and so am I. Because you never know what kind of ideas pop up out of that. Bradley, do you have anything to...
Well, we got a snowstorm coming in, maybe. And, yeah, other than that, nothing real new yet, but after the snowstorm, I'm sure we're, our park commission will be in full bloom and our, um, trail organization will be, uh, some updates on the new ATV trails. Hopefully we'll have some more information coming out. We're another group that could use, uh, another member. So if, uh, somebody wanted us to be on the ATV trail board, please get ahold of us and, uh, let's get you on board and keep going. Other than that, Mayor, I'd like to say one last thing, is I'd like to congratulate the Evlith Gilbert Swim Team. They, uh, did a real good job. They sent seven, I believe, to state with five alternates and, uh, they had a pretty good turnout. So they, uh, the swim team did a very good job down there.
Well, that's good. Brian, you got anything to add tonight?
No, I'm gonna keep my big mouth shut for tonight.
You know, I saw the funniest thing on the news, all those protests in Illinois and the campaign stuff. One reporter, he's talking to camera and he hollers, "Hey you, hollering the obscenities, come over here." He goes, "What are you protesting about?" "I don't know, I don't wanna see." "Get out of here, then." And he hollers, "Hey, you big mouth, what are you protesting for?" I've never seen anything like that. Joe, you got anything to add?
No, I'm gonna keep quiet now, too.
Brian?
I'm good.
We got any tickets, though?
Do we draw tonight, Steph?
Okay.
All right, it's the best part.
Always wanna be the hero.
See, see who I can make for a friend. It's gonna be tough for you.
You've picked everyone so far.
Yeah.
Maybe you could get one more friend tonight.
All right. And this would be the April 9th game, I'm assuming, against the Calgary Flames. And it goes to, what's it, two tickets, right? We got two free tickets to the wild game against the Calgary Flames, goes to Leroy Tolbert at 314 Douglas Avenue.
Good for Leroy.
Congratulations, Leroy. His kids are gonna be fighting for that.
Steph, you got anything to add? Tim?
Uh, Mayor and Council, public, I'm compelled to bring up two issues here that are kind of an ongoing issue and especially with us getting snow in the forecast, calendar parking. Um, we've been having some issues here recently and I, I just wanna remind the public that calendar parking is enforced 24/7, um, even during the daytimes. Um, you know, we do our best to get out there. We're asking the public to be diligent, especially now with the snow and also with the sweepers, uh, they're starting to get out to get some of that gravel off, hopefully. Um, we really need the public's help into, uh, following that ordinance of calendar parking. Second issue is, uh, I've been very busy this week with it, is blight. With the snow disappearing, it's leaving a lot of, uh, a lot of things in, uh, our yards. Driving around, I've noticing, uh, in busy parts of our town, couches out in front yards, chest freezers, refrigerators, um, our guys were working, uh, trying to expedite these so they're not quite nice or to the, uh, to the public, and we're doing our best. But we're asking, again, the public's help, uh, to clean these, uh, these items up out of the yard and get them moved out, and, um, we'll be working on that as, uh, near future arises here.
Jerry, you got anything else to bring up?
Nothing further.
You got, you everything all gassed up and ready to go, Jerry, for tomorrow morning?
I hate to say it, but yes.
Rod, you got anything to add?
No, other than, uh, we'd like to, Jerry, you know, that, you know, two minutes prices are significantly lower than they have been, word on their prices that we haven't seen for 15 years, so, uh, we think it's been time for you to sort any additional paving that was marginal, which we'd like to...
Well, that's what I said, the, the quotes there, they're a lot, the less than I expected to see. So maybe we'll go with a round two on that, if you come up with some streets next time, Jerry, for that.
What I was thinking, too, maybe additional blacktopping where we're gonna be replacing sidewalks. So we got new driving surface and new sidewalks, you know, if, if it so fits, you know, kind of think that route. That way it looks like a whole brand new street and everything.
Yeah, and wherever we, we figure out to do, uh, the overlays, usually it's, we consider the curbs. If the curbs are really bad, the street's usually bad. We'd have to, I'm sure, good curbs, streets that people go to.
Bonnie, you have anything to add?
Oh, man, something to add.
Things are pretty quiet, Dave.
Yep.
Anybody from the audience? If not, I'll adjourn the meeting.